Right, let's stand for.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Sheaf, would you lead us in word of prayer?
Loving Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together, encourage each other to excellence. We ask, we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther, to be the best we can be. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I'll call this meeting of the Hardy County Commission for March 5th to order at this time. Make everyone welcome to our meeting today. We're going to change or divert a little bit from the posted agenda, but we'll get everything covered today. I'm going to start off with Sheriff Dawson. Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. You probably already know about this. We'll start first with the task force arrests this past month, but had three arrests. Lance Flores and Kaufman seizure, seventeen grams of fentanyl being trafficked into Hardy County. Assisted US probation our guys did, leading to additional charges on June Blanchek convicted felon due to seizure of methamphetamines, marijuana, fentanyl, and a firearm, and two federal drug sentencing. I subject Roger's subject out this past month. Several other ongoing investigations, links back to Baltimore that's active right now. There'll be arrests probably next month or two on those. I'm sure you all probably know we're finally getting the money from Pantera that we've been after for all these years. Their deposit notes, we're going to finally have that account settled. A long time coming. Alex Vance, our new hire, he's completed his first week in the academy. He seems to be doing fine. The first week's the one you always worry about that they might run off. I think they lost six or seven of them out of their class the first week, but he seems like he's hanging tough. I think he'll make it alright. And then, of course, Allegheny Wood, I'm getting a lot of complaints on what's happened down there with the loggers who sold logs to them. And of course, bank accounts have been frozen. You know, they're in, out of a lot of money, those people are. And I'm trying to figure out a way, maybe, to work something out with them to where they'll at least get paid. You know, what's took place in Hardy County is probably going to be a statewide problem.
There's a class action lawsuit on that.
Is there?
Yeah, because, but there's, there's more to the story than just the lawsuit we were talking about this morning. They didn't conform to the Warren Act, W A R N, which says, you know, if you have over a hundred employees, you have to give sixty days' notice. And they didn't do that. So there's, there's a firm that started a class action lawsuit. But I think there'll be, the devil will be in the details on that because their accounts were also frozen. So I don't know what will turn out. But yeah, there's a class action lawsuit in the state of West Virginia against AWP.
What worries me about it is you've got a lot of these loggers, individuals run these companies. They buy the timber off the people, they cut it, so they owe them the money, then they let Allegheny have it. And with that bank accounts being frozen, their checks are no good that's coming back. So it's really got those guys in a real mess.
Yeah, right. Well, and then Allegheny Wood has been in a mess as well because, you know, the shipping lanes. And then they had to divert their ships and take, you know, it takes like six weeks longer. And then they're, they're longer in terms of their accounts receivable, getting those back. So it's a lot to the story, but it's a sad story for a lot.
I talked to Lucas about trying to figure out what we can do, maybe to keep, if there's any way we could keep the logs from getting, being sold and taken out of here that has been, you know, dropped off there, the payments haven't been made for it.
Well, and that's, my theory is if they haven't been paid for it, then they really don't belong to them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's what we're trying to tell Lucas Explorer that's the morning we were talking about.
The answer to that is I went through this once when sawdust. When you walk in there, that's mine. I can identify it anywhere. If you can't identify it, then you're, you're in trouble again.
Well, see, the worst thing about it-
But you want them, that's the answer.
Well, see, the worst thing about it, I went over and talked to them yesterday, and they sort those logs by-
But they mark them. They got them marked.
Well, they sort them by spec- they sort them by species. That's mean they're all scattered together.
Yeah, but most of them are tagged, and they can almost pick out the logs that you brought in there.
Yeah.
If you figure out a way, they owe me some money too.
Well, I told them, told them to bring their shipping papers over, what they ended up on the sales today, so I could look at it and see if we can sort something out on it.
I'm hoping to get it. Yeah, it's a tough situation.
Yeah, I don't really have anything else. Y'all have any question?
No.
Are we having any problems with the false reports to EMS or fire or the Sheriff's Department? Because they passed a bill about this. The SWAT law is what it was called. But I don't know if we're having any issues with it or not.
We have it happen every once in a while, but generally when that happens, we arrest the people for it.
Okay, and I think, I wrote it down here, but the current law is a misdemeanor, I think, right? I think this new law, it's HB 4845, will turn it into a felony. I think that's the idea behind the law. I just wondered about that.
Yeah, we had a case not too long ago in the city. The person was calling and something was happening, and law enforcement went there and wasn't.
Yeah, same thing. We had one like a while back too that was called in. Suppose it's been a domestic in progress. And I knew the people and I called them, and they weren't even in the county. So we ended up arresting the person that called that one in.
Anything else for the sheriff? All right, thank you, sir. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Ms. Barr, about family support group? Please come forward.
Thank you guys for allowing us here. And again, very sorry that we missed the last two. I'm Kalia Barr.
I'm Stephanie Rexrood.
And we are the, so we work with Community or Eastern Action, and we're an umbrella under Eastern Action as the Hardy County Family Support Center. And we've got four support centers, one in Hardy, Grant, Hampshire, and Pendleton. And so we are, we just opened, our grand opening was December 21st, if I'm not mistaken. And since then, like, I'm really, I am kind of glad that we've postponed the meeting because now I feel like I'm more confident to be able to tell you a little bit more about what we do, whereas two months ago, we had just opened and really weren't even that a hundred percent sure what we were doing. So now I feel a little bit more confident with being able to let you know. We are, we're a hub where people, families can come in to get informal and formal support services. And if they need help financially, like with an electric bill or utility of some sort, we are able to help families. If there's no children in the home, then we help them and guide them to the right place, like Catholic Charities or Salvation Army or DHHR. But if there is children in the home, then usually we can help take care of the electric bill or whatever. And we're not, we can't help and assist with rent. Sadly, that is the one thing that calls about. But Eastern Action changed it up a little bit. So instead of just giving out, like, giving handouts, like we're offering a handout. So instead of giving, paying for the electric bill or utility bill, we ask them to sign up for our coaching program. So we are all certified life coaches. And when they sign up for our program, they'll come in twice a month. And they utilize, or they make up their own plan. We talk with them. They make up their own, like, they make up their own goal that they want to achieve. And it's up to a six-month program, and we work with them on helping them to achieve the goal that they set for themselves. And all about, like, we can continue to help them financially, if that's the case. So it was just, it's a different turn that we, we took. So we didn't just continue offering it out. We want them to be able to empower themselves and be able to do it for themselves in the future.
Yeah, Kalia, what's the process on that? I do, like what you're saying there, what's the process on that? So, okay, there's this contract signed and the FSC, FSC, let's just call it that. FSC is paying that electric bill, and this client is signing a agreement to come into the life coaching program. Like, is there any, are there any, what are the guardrails to keep the person on track? Like, meaning if they, because electric bill's been paid, right? Okay. So that this person, you know, just goes off the rails, like what, there's nothing to hold them, right? And that's the hard part, but-
It is. So, I mean, like I said, I was really a little bit more confident coming in here now because we've dealt with that already. So when that happens, we, we have people that have come in and they've signed up for it. It's a very lengthy process because we are getting all your information. We're asking questions to see what else we can further help them with. And we've had people sit through an hour and a half meeting with us to not come back. And, I mean, it's only though, it's only happened, I would say, I know of two times. And that's out of like the twenty-something families that we've helped.
Okay.
So what we do though, in that case, when we, if they don't, like, say they come back three months from now, we're going to be able to see that, you know, we helped you with your electric and you're coming back in for your water bill. We can't help you right now. Like, you'll have to join our coaching program. You have to be a member and do it for at least thirty days. So that would mean, I mean, be like active and-
They're basically saying no to future help if they don't continue.
Yeah, and we let them know that, like, they sign a, an agreement that says that you are available to stop. But when you stop, you stop all services that we offer.
Okay.
And then we also let them know that if you want to, I mean, if this happens, then you'll have to come back in and join up for thirty days.
Okay. You know what? I wish I would have thought of your program. I had a Mineral County Commissioner who called me. There was a, did you get a call? I don't know if the other Commissioners got this call or not, but he's a pastor. And I don't know if the person goes to his church or not, but there was some sort of domestic dispute. And the lady had gotten left at the Morefield Sheets. It's probably, it's probably a story that won't turn out well, you know, because then some things happened after that. But maybe they'll be back and maybe they could come to your program. But I got a call and said, you have a card or anything you can leave?
Not yet. So they just made our logo. When we do get our cards in, then-
But you have a, does it come through your email? Does your, does your information, I think your information comes, yep, right there. The 7711. That, that number comes through when you're-
It comes, so when you call that number, they come in, it goes into our receptionist, and she'll send you into us.
Is that twenty-four seven, or is it?
So my number will be, I mean, when we get it, our system, we're rerouting our system.
Okay.
So they can be able to hit when they call that central number. If they want Hardy, Grant, Pendleton, they can hit whatever. And then it'll go directly to us.
To a caseworker?
Yes, so we will have available, like, because it goes straight to my cell phone.
Okay.
So we'll have it available at all times. And, I mean, we are available for emergency services if that is needed. We, we've helped, I'd have to say, like, I was, I was very, I was very happy about the program. But I was just kind of skeptical going into it, just for the fact that I know a lot of people don't like change. So when Eastern Action changed, that we're not just going to continue to just hand it out, like, we want you to do something to help. And we've gotten some negative feedback. But honestly, it's, I feel like it's been a bit more positive than what I had anticipated. We have a lot of, we have families that are actually like striving to complete their goals that they set for themselves.
Was this something also, is this come from our state, like, the state legislative process? Because if you think about it, they just, I don't know if it's signed into law yet, but there's unemployment. There, there, there are revisions that potentially are going to happen to the unemployment bill, you know. That's SB 841, I wrote it down. But they're shortening the number of weeks that someone could be on unemployment from twenty-six to twenty-four. They're also offering more benefits. I think it's like seventy-five percent of your weekly salary during the first four weeks, and then it gradually decreases. So there's this, there's this push for, you know, like, more accountability being one way of putting it, and this is kind of the same thing.
It's, it, like, we, we want them to be accountable for what they're, what's, what is going on, like, what's happening. We want to empower them to be able to learn to do it then, like, to be, if you're coming in with an electric termination, there's obviously something there. Some, we have discussed with some families that it's just been, I mean, it was their very first time, and it was just a bump in the road. And in that case, like, we, I mean, okay, well, how can we not do this? Like, what can we do to move forward and not hit this bump again? Some, it's a constant generational defect. Like, I mean, it's passed on and on, and it's, so how are we going to be able to help you get out of this situation? How can you move forward and not, and be able to maintain your bills? So we do have, our support center offers fun activities for families, but we also offer educational activity or classes. So we are offering budgeting classes. Because that was a lot of the, a lot of our goals from our families, we've seen, were budgeting. Like, we just have a really hard time. We don't know how to do that. So our accountant is coming in. And she's going to sit down and she's going to do a budgeting class with them. And then we also have a fire safety in East Hardy. We just did one in Morefield, but we're going to go to East Hardy. So we're not, we're trying to, what we can offer here, we're partnering with the CIS and potentially going into the high school to use the auditorium and be able to offer some of our safety or educational classes there as well. So we're going to do the fire safety training this month there. And then I've talked to the mayor over there, and we're potentially going to go and try to offer some of our concrete supports there as well. So we have a baby bank, a hygiene bank, household products like cleaning supplies and such, and clothing. And that way, we can take some of that, box it up. We have a really big, what is it, the mobile action truck?
Yeah, that's exciting.
Yeah, it's very exciting. And so we contacted them-
Take it to the people.
Yes, and take it out to them. So it was very, it's, I feel like it's going to be really awesome. We're really, it is a slow process. Like, we're slowly getting up. And we have, this month, like, we have a Easter celebration where we're having a professional photographer come in, and we pay for them to take the pictures for the families. And we're also doing, like, a greenie club, like, for the children to come in. We have educational clubs for them to be able to, to do. Mom support. It's just like a little support program for moms to come in to just kind of talk about everything. We're looking at doing a dad one, just trying to get a dad to be able to, to do that, because dads don't want to listen to moms, so.
Yeah, I think the real, the real strength of this family support center program is going to be the coaching or mentoring, which is going to tie those programs in with the additional help, which, which is change through education and support to help make the situation better and prove their standing. And I think that is the big thing that excites me about the family support centers.
It's really exciting. It's really a great thing, I think, for our community. You were happy with the funding, is what you told me, right? When we met, isn't there, isn't it? It's more than just one year, right?
So, well, right now, we are, it's a yearly funding-
It's yearly, okay.
So I am, I mean, I'm pretty confident, like, if we continue to help it grow. And, I mean, it seems to be, it's working really great in other areas as well. There's a total of fifty, not fifty, thirty-six family support centers in West Virginia. Tucker County's has been open for the past twenty years.
Okay.
So, I'm, I mean, I'm confident that it's something that's going to stick around. And, but we are, it's just, like, getting it up and running. Just like with all new programs, it takes a little bit, like, we've had, like, maybe three people at one event. But, I mean, like, our, my advisory board was like, do not give up, like, continue doing what you're doing. And, I mean, people, the word will get out, and people will eventually start coming, so.
It just, it's just been going since December, right?
Yes.
That's when the first ones opened their doors in the county surrounding. So, like I say, with anything that starts new, there's a few little hiccups along the way.
And then people don't know about it, and attendance might not be as great initially, but definitely don't give up because that's an important service.
Yep. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
What's the number they put you?
It's three or four, five, three, eight, seven, seven, one, one.
Seven, seven, one?
One, one.
One thing that I want to bring up in regard to the life coaching program, I know when I first heard about it, I'm like, what does this even entail? You know, this was new to both of us. But, so of course, our families will come in, say if they need help with their electric bill. But then, when we sit down with them, and it's broken up into two sections. So we have long-term goals and short-term goals. So the long term is usually six to twelve months, and then we have a three to six. So it's really interesting because our families, they'll come in and they'll bring stuff up that, you know, they would like to achieve. Like, I had one mom come in, and she wants to further her education. And, you know, it'll open up a lot of opportunities for her if she does that. So she actually went to the college and got enrolled in the adult literacy program, and she is super excited. And, you know, it's just, our families think of these things, and, you know, initially what they come in for, it just opens up a whole, you know, you know, array of opportunities, I'm sorry. But yeah, it's, it's really been a hit. I mean, we've had a little negative feedback, but for the most part, you know, it's helped a lot of people. And I just love seeing the results from that. You know, it's, it, it makes our job more rewarding, knowing that we're helping these people, so.
Well, you said, you said twenty-some families since December, right? I mean, that's not, that's not anything to sneeze at.
I think it's only gonna, there's only gonna be more good reports coming about what these family resource or family support centers are accomplishing.
I have two questions. Do you have a Facebook page?
Yes, sir.
All right, can you send me a link?
Yes, sir.
Because, and my second one, do you have translator?
So that is something that we, we don't have. Google translator is it? We've had one, one family that's come in. She spoke Creole, I think. And they really, they were there for the FRN, so I was able to help them to go over there. But they, the Head Start Center has some translators that I had spoken to. That, well, I spoke to the Head Start Center, they, I mean, and if I need, like, Hispanic translators, I do know, like, there is one with the Head Start. As far as like Creole and the, like, there's a vast different variety. I was talking to the communities and school. I don't really have a translator.
Well, just stop down to Health Department and talk to Donna and Emily. Because we see a lot of people that need your help. And we use the language line. I don't know if you're funding a paper or not, it's about fifty, sixty minutes.
Yeah, but that's something, that's something that, that we could take up as a board, because I said on the Eastern Board-
You all could take up as a board. But like, see, I get, I have nowhere to get reimbursement for any of that.
Yeah.
So that's just something we take-
So it's called the language?
It's the language line, and they can give you the number or so on so forth, but they can translate.
The same thing you all use, Paul.
Yeah.
We just have to use it because we don't know if they want a pregnancy test, STP, or whatnot after, so. But stop and see my girls and give them your information.
Okay.
Because we can send a lot of people either way.
Okay. That would be, I mean, that, that would be really awesome.
I would think those costs could be reimbursed from somewhere. I suspect that they can. I mean, the government wants to let them across the border, they ought to help us take care of it.
I haven't been able to find, find anything yet.
It looks like it ought to be there.
And, you know, you get, you get a patient in there with a doctor, you're talking forty-five, fifty minutes.
I ran into the same problem with the tow truck. You get them, you can't, you don't know where they want to go or what they want to do. You're lost. I am.
And at the communities and schools, actually, like, when we were talking, like, they, they actually use the students. The students that have, I mean, that are learning to speak English. And they're just really hoping that they're translating the way that they would get.
Well, and then the problem with them, they, don't put this in the paper, boss. But they, they train their kids.
It's a lot easier.
They train their kids on what to say, what to say, what information to give about, so on and so forth, because if they're illegal, they don't want to give out too, too much information.
Yes.
And the kids are well-trained in that. So, I mean, we use them too, but you just got to be careful.
Yeah.
So we can partner up.
Most definitely. I can definitely send you our information.
Please come around as regular as you can and share some of these success stories with us.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes.
And what's the name of your location?
It's the Hardy County Family Support Center.
It'd be great if we, the other Commissioners agree to this, but it would be great if we shared that out on our own Facebook.
Sounds good.
Well, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. You're tough, ain't you, old buddy?
I, I don't know how much longer I'm going to have.
You're about to come out of this.
Time to come out of this coat hunting thing. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you guys. Thank you, guys. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Hey, you've been hot.
Paul. Just a little close, yeah, 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 yeah.
Hey, Mark, real quick, how did your search and rescue fare out the other day when you were gone and we were down at the meeting? And I knew you were, how'd that work out?
It worked out pretty good.
Found?
They found him. We, we didn't find him with our air hole, but they found him.
Good. I hadn't heard in the morning.
Thank you, Paul.
I found him earlier that morning.
Oh, good.
It gets dark. They found a trail.
Okay.
Okay, Paul, this director of office of emergency management, nine one one, for the month of February, report. Then I have a bunch of other papers. Steve just cleaned his file out, so I'm going to help fill it back. I'm in nine one one, we're in process paying the second final ABYOT bill. That money came in. I've got your check now, eighteen thousand, seven, fifty-nine, twenty-three cents, which was added to the hundred and twenty thousand. That comes out of the four hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant that we've received. Currently, the construction company is hoping to have the tower in the building delivered this week. And I told her we need to get that building and get the steel in there and start stacking that tower. Then they'll also get the electrical inspection, that conduit and everything's been run for the electric up to this tower. So they have to get a crane to do all that stuff, because I forget what that building weighs. It's a prefab building and stuff. So I'm hoping with the break in the weather that they can get started on that and get that completed on that. I think most all of the new portables, mobile radios from the fire companies have been installed for the first responder vehicles and things on that. So I think they did the last one, maybe last Friday, if I remember right, on that. I will continue the discussion with the two different cell companies. I know T-Mobile was interested.
I've got a guy that keeps messaging me, wanting to get together and talk to you and to us about that tower, as well as possibly some other opportunities.
Right, because we do have some towers set, could use one.
Yeah.
So hopefully-
We need to, Paul, you and I need to make sure we get a date and get in touch with this fellow.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is any of them going through cell service, going down Street Fifty-Nine or out of the Wood?
Yes, yes, that's what it is, he's talking about.
Yep.
But there's one that doesn't even have service in West Virginia, but they're doing a large build out, right?
Yes. They're in Grant, someone. But these are those phones, flip phones, where they advertise for the elderly and stuff, which are larger numbers and stuff.
Yeah.
But to buy them for here, there's no service to make connectivity for those and stuff. So hopefully, they will move in the area, because they're cheaper phones, especially for the senior.
Well, and the elderly, that would be a great thing.
Okay. Call volume during the month of February, we had a total of five hundred and seventy-four calls came into the center. Law enforcement had following calls. Department of Natural Resources only had one. I'm not sure where they were, maybe all. I know we do not have a current DNR officer assigned to us directly. They're assigned to two other counties right now. Because the one that was here is now working for Pilgrims on that. So Sheriff's Office had two hundred and forty calls. Sheriff's Office had two hundred and forty calls, Moorefield Police Department, a hundred and sixty-six calls, and the West Virginia State Police had thirty-five calls. On EMS side, West Hardy Animal Service had ninety-six. HCAA had seventy-three and Mordenville had twenty-two. So the east side, west side is free, well, matched right now. Fire departments had the following calls, Cape Valley Fire had ten calls, Mathias Becker at twelve, and Moorefield Fire Department at twenty-five calls. Then we sent out fifteen calls, Department of Highway with the winds and stuff, for trees and stuff across the roads and stuff. Under the Office of Emergency Management and the Grants, Wendy and I completed the twenty-twenty-two EMPG application Oasis. However, there was a problem with the Oasis and when the application had to be remitted, and I understand that they are still having problems with Oasis. We've received a twenty-twenty-one EMPG award letter and I submitted it back to them for the payment. I called and they said that payment was processed on the twenty-sixth of February, but that check has not came in either. So I don't know what they're going to Charleston, but not much evidently. On that, and that money, that amount is twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars under the EMPG, under that. Under the SHG grant application to the state, we sent in three apps, we got one approved, which was for the office of Greg's office for radios and stuff to work between the different polling places. I'm still working with the state on that. They, they have this big problem with radios and stuff with the siren system and everything else, but these radios will not operate through the siren system. Cause we already have a frequency that we used years ago for mapping and stuff and we still have that frequency, so we've gone across that. I have two meetings coming up with LAPC. I go to Martinsburg next Wednesday. We're meeting there and then I have to go to Glade Springs on the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. And then there's a meeting in Charleston on the end of the month. It's actually, I got fifteen, but it's actually twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. That will be through NINA conference. Part of that conference deals with next-gen nine-one-one mapping and addressing. I have talked to Nicole about that and then also that meeting will also deal with the bill that the House Finance passed yesterday for the retirement program for dispatchers. So they are having a meeting on that and that probably will pass full house without a problem. Cause there wasn't any NAY votes against that in the Finance Committee on that, so it looks like that's gonna pass. Then there's a three-hundred NIMs class coming up in Moorefield from the Department of Ag in April. In the first, the end of April, first part of May, and then there's a couple of our classes that we're looking at, two through the fire department stuff.
I got two things. One, I think we're getting ready to run the NIMs class in April and October.
Right.
If you need one. My second question is, how long does it take to update map? I moved in August and my address still does not show up and that's a problem with nine-one-one.
We've had a problem because what we do, we do the addressing, but then it goes down to Nicole and Emily and the planning office for putting into the mapping system.
My address will not show up, so if I call Paul for an emergency and give you my address, if they didn't know where I live, they wouldn't find me.
That is what we just did on that one up. It's gonna impact that improvement, probably.
Right, and supposedly she sent all that through, she's gotten it back and she's reviewing it now to finalize a few bugs in it. So once she gets that, she should be able to give you that on thumb drive where I can download it into our system.
Well, it's also a problem meanwhile, when people come looking for septic systems, because I go to the map viewer or whatever and if it's not updated, the way I look for septic systems is a list of people's names and previous owners. And sometimes, a lot of times, they don't even have the current owner of the house listed.
But we took action on that recently and gave more to Nicole or GIS only. So there should be improvements being seen in this.
Okay. I need to check for it.
It's a three-month trial. I think it's a three-month trial, right? It's ninety days we approve that, approve this, so.
Electronic tax map by the state only has to be updated once a year. Now, if I go to your map viewer, the Hardy County Parcel Bureau, whatever. Once a year. That's a, that's a tax map, but that's all it is.
When did that period?
Now, what Jimmy is gonna do is scan those cars.
When did that three-month period start?
That give you lists of owners.
When did that three-month period start? When did we approve that?
That would be great help, because a lot of these people from, that's moving in from the city, so and so forth, they want a hundred and seventy-six.
Basically, we're one month into it, the three month.
A lot of times, it's about the original builder of the house. You know, they might have been sold five or six times and I can't go on there and get the names to, to even help them find them. It, it just creates a problem.
And then we have nothing to do, I know we get called all the time about Google Map and stuff and where they get their information. We do not provide any of that to Google Map and I have no idea where they pull it from. Cause people complain all the time that it's wrong on Google, Google Map, so I don't know where, who's wrong.
We can, though, I think we can inject, though, but as, as county officials, you can let Google know what needs to be updated and they'll address it.
So once we get all these new addresses in the system, maybe we need to contact Google and do that on that. Then the other thing I have is, I don't know if you all got this from Department of Ag, where they're gonna start spraying?
Gypsy moth?
Well, I don't know if you call gypsy moth, no, I think, yes. Sponge moth, which is also gypsy moth.
Yeah.
So I don't know. Did you get that?
I, I, I saw the email go by.
There's a map showing areas. Yeah, bring that. Also, I have a resolution for the county commission due next month for telecommunicator week, which is in April.
Yes.
You wanna give it to Wendy?
Yes, please.
And then you all dash for totals on fire and EMS, or I did one on EMS too.
Where does that for the last calendar one?
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-three.
This is medical.
Twenty-twenty-three.
Steve must like to have it, since he's on that board now.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got the one for the fire companies here too, shown for the year.
They work when you're tougher than me, bro.
Yeah. I think it's all. Nathan's here, I'm in good shape. If I go down, I got Nathan here.
I think that's all I've got, unless you've got questions. It's for telecommunicator week, which is April.
For next month.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have received, we have received monies for EMS salary enhancement, correct? And we have received two checks for fire.
Yes, we're waiting on the rules.
Waiting, waiting for the guidelines for that, so, yeah.
Good luck.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that's.
Thank you.
Paul, we'll get together and see if we can't set a date here, maybe before we leave today and see if I get in touch with this fella from T-Mobile and very interested, wants to talk to us, so. Yeah. Thank you. Uh, Nathan?
They said they were coming right back.
They had a meeting in Moreton Town, so they wanted to get on the road, so, thank you, sir.
Morning, everyone. Nathan Custer, Frank, I'm in authority. Uh, just a monthly update. Last month, uh, sorry, last month for tow expenses for February, we spent ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and six dollars, thirty-five cents. We had a total revenue of a hundred and five thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars, fifty-three cents. Uh, revenues comprised of the seventy-five thousand from the fee, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents from the services, and nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and five cents from other incomes. As far as vehicles, uh, three-seven-one's in service, it does have a leak in the cab. We started to, um, we put steel in where we think it was. It's a, it's a known thing with the Fords, uh, usually it's from the back tail light on the box. We just put steel in right there and hopefully that should fix it. Seven-two, seven-three, seven-six are in service, nothing to report. And for the Argo and the Surf, we added a tote, just kind of like rehab type things coming up in the fresh fire season and hiker season and stuff like that, kind of some rehab stuff for firefighters or even our people or stuff like that. Three-three's in service. As far as building grounds, there's nothing to report. Uh, equipment, seven-three striker's still out, uh, it's structurally fixed now. Uh, it's the internal computer boards that are still on backward. Uh, striker does not have a projected date for that yet. They're hoping soon, but I don't know how those things go. Uh, we did receive six of the new portables from the county AFG grant. We believe there's still a few more we were supposed to get, we haven't got yet. We're still checking to whether we were supposed to get six or what the total number was supposed to be for those. Also, as far as AFG grant, I'm working on the AFG grant presently for the county. I should have submitted by Friday. Friday's the due date, so I wanna, uh, put that in for probably more equipment for, for county again, for West Hardy, us and, uh, Mordenville. Audits, um, they're still underway. Um, submitting more stuff again Friday. Of course, it was Friday, so I probably won't hear back from them until tomorrow, today or tomorrow, I figure. Um, at the regular scheduled meeting, um, for the HCA Board Directors, uh, the budget for fiscal year twenty-five was approved for submission to review for you all. Uh, the approved proposed budget is attached. You will note that the present budget is more in line with actual expenditures. Uh, we actually created this one with projected data from QuickBooks. Um, it were last several years of expenditures, stuff like that, so it's a pretty accurate operational budget. Annual payment is due for the equipment purchase. Um, this will be the second of four annual payments. We are requesting a drawdown of the amount of eighty-four thousand, five, thirty-nine, ninety-eight cents for the invoice. Uh, we did attach it. So we got two more payments of this. This is the equipment purchase we did two years ago for the county. We are also requesting rates of remaining funds for the CARES money, uh, to be transferred to, um, the authority. This will help backfill the budget for the remainder of the fiscal year. March and June are our quarterly payments and stuff, so those months are usually a little higher for expenditures and stuff like that. I don't think it really had anything else other than the AFG grant we're doing presently through it.
So the request, Nathan, for this month is gonna be the sixty-five thousand.
Yes.
The eighty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine, ninety-eight.
Correct.
And the forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight, thirty-four.
From the CARES money, yes.
Okay, that's what the request is for this month.
Derek sent me here with the dirty work.
Did you say the seventy-five thousand or the sixty-fives?
Yeah, I said sixty-five, sixty, seventy-five was last month, or we requested additional ten.
So sixty-five this month.
Correct.
Would you entertain a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
To that effect, with those figures, with the expectation that if you need additional, you take it out of the CARES money.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
Okay, second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, yes, I do have further discussion. Here's what I want to give the Hammonds Authority. You guys are maybe already doing this, but grants, so we want that pursued.
Right.
No question, because like with some of the bills that our legislature is putting forward and, you know, and I know that you can get some of those.
That's right.
And meaning you specifically, so, um, I, I would strongly encourage you guys to be looking in that direction because I think that, you know, that's, there's gonna be competition for that and we just have to always make sure, you know, Hardy County is in the best position available. And I do think we could receive some money in those ways, so.
Right, right.
Put that out.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, proceed to vote. All those in favor, sticking five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Have you spoke with this Jeff Owens guy before?
Yes, yes, we've spoken with him before. Uh, Wendy speaks with him very often. I've personally spoken with him before as well. So, yeah, uh, I mean, he's been helpful.
He's very helpful.
He's extremely helpful.
Excellent.
Coming into this position where.
I was gonna tell him he needs to keep his eyes, his ears open for anything.
I'm unsure of, so he definitely helps with that.
Hey, Nathan, did you hear about this, um, program to allow EMTs to get funding to become paramedics?
I've heard a little bit about it. Um, I was actually talking to a colleague of mine, but he was saying, they haven't really structured a way to, like, as far as funding and getting payback from the employee to advance. I heard there's a lot of debate of how they're going to get, like, an EMT would, when becoming a paramedic, how do you get the money back that you pay for the program as far as hours? Cause I know there's a lot of, like, um, like, I help those and I know W Medicine doesn't really, well, you have to pay for your HRN or college or whatever, but you're gonna be like a dollar per hour or hour per dollar. So I know there's a lot of discussion of how that's gonna get repaid back to.
That's, okay.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, that bill is moving.
Yeah, I heard, I heard it ringing and getting a lot of traction.
It's, uh, it's in the house right now, as far as I know.
Yeah. I saw that this morning.
So, yeah.
Yep.
I was just gonna look. Oh, yes, I was gonna say, council, no, come there, big bricks to kiss. Our sheriff was always pulling our guys up, graduating from the academy, so we put a thing that said, if you leave us within two years after we've sent you to the academy, you pay us back the money that you spent, so.
Well, they have, and they have some, they have to be three years as an EMT before they can qualify.
Right, well, you're right. There's, there used to be a big, um, when I was, you know, through this, they had to be like three years up to five years, which in one, three, even five for a paramedic program. But I know there's a lot of programs now that's, you got your, your EMT can take this, this, um, paramedic program, which, I mean, some people, they're, they can do that. And this, of course, others, you have to have a big room and.
Gotcha.
Keep under your wing for a little while, but, um, we're not ready for that quite.
Gotcha.
One of the ladies in Randolph, excuse me, sorry, one lady in Randolph got a grant and, uh, paid for them to instruct some of these newcomers into EMT and also paramedic. And I mean, they had very, very little input that they had to pay, like, forty, fifty dollars. And I mean, they gave me a lot of money to teach them, but you know, that goes. A lot of people show up and a few people sign up.
Right, right, that's a, that's another big, uh, big fact down at the.
Call her, if you have any questions about a little program, absolutely.
Down at Escape Conferences, there's a lot of discussions, a lot of ideas coming through. The show you was down there, uh, PS Martin, and there was a lot of input coming from those guys. There are changes, projected changes they want to do as far as recruitment and training and stuff like that from the state level, but, um, they're just not quite fully in motion quite yet. But there are a lot of good ideas and a lot of real world, actual, like, this sounds really good ideas that haven't been brought up.
Yeah, yeah, those two guys are good, they are good.
Sorry, let me stand here.
That's okay, thank you.
You're good.
Thank you, everyone.
Bill Oars.
Yes, sir.
Our Health Department, report.
Bill Oars, Hardy County Health Department. Just to piggyback off what he said, we do the same thing with sanitarians. Because we have to send them to eight-week training school and, and involves a lot of travel. So we get a contract that if they don't stay at least three years, then they have to pay back their training cost.
We're not trying to be greedy.
No, but you also, it's so competitive right now, you know? You send somebody through an academy and he comes to work here in Grant County, offering ten thousand dollars more, guess what? He's gone and you're looking.
Yes, and that's some of the problems we deal with.
It, it happens all the time. From the Health Department aspect, I just told Malley that Senator Manchin's office did send me a text and said, what do you call it, Malley?
It's their funding, dedicated funding, the earmarks.
Earmarks, yeah.
Yeah, it's open. I can't use it at the Health Department because we can't backfill, but I didn't know[1674.81] Yeah, it's open. I can't use it at the Health Department because we can't backfield, but I didn't know if you guys have projects so on so forth that you might want to look at.
Yeah.
Health Department wise, we are seeing a lot of RSV, we're still seeing a lot of COVID. Shots have slowed down on the COVID side, the RSV, not so much. We do have TB in, in the county. I have twelve inactive cases and one active case that's coming to, to Hardy County. One of the big issues that we're fighting in legislature right now is the immunization law. There's a place for exemptions in my mind, but you look at what's going on in Florida with the measles outbreak. We're going to have issues if, if they repeal our immunization law the way it stands now. Everybody's going to want a religious exemption, everybody's going to want a medical exemption. And we're going to start seeing diseases that we haven't seen for fifty and sixty years. The last thing I have is, am I allowed to share?
You certainly may.
That we might be in a situation to where we can hold a groundbreaking ceremony on our new Health Department in a couple of weeks.
Yes, yes.
That is amazing. Thank you. Thank you guys so much because it's much needed and it's going to be beautiful.
Bill, I, I caught the, went into a conference call, webinar last week. And I got in there late, but it was on immigration. It was a, uh, talking about the situation and government programs and things like that. And there were, it was a reference to, and I wrote it down, it's on a note at home. But it was to a site for grants dealing with immigrant populations. And it, it was a whole host of things. And part of it was health related. And I, you know, I don't know if, if that's something that, and like I say, I kind of got into the, the webinar a little bit late. And I'm not sure if some of those things that were being referenced were state-only kinds of grants and grant opportunities. But if, if you wouldn't mind, maybe contact whoever at the state Health Department's watching that. And, and see, because I, I do believe that they, in Charleston, they do not realize the problems and concerns that we have about our immigrant workforce.
They do not.
And I, I, I just think that maybe if we could shed some light on it, possibly get some grant monies. If there are those that need to come through the state to address some of those things like you're already, you know, talking about. As we look forward to possibly another influx or surge of immigrants to our community. I think it would probably behoove us to do whatever we can to find some grants to help alleviate not only the health aspects, but the other aspects that.
And the immunization part has me really, really concerned.
Immunization is one.
A lot of them come and they don't have any. They don't have any and here's my thought. What worries me is you have kids in school that for medical reasons cannot get immunized. So then therefore, when we open it up, where these kids become susceptible to whatever disease outbreak is coming at the time. And it worries me. But I will, I'll reach out to the, to see. Because it's a big part of what we're doing now. My nurse asked me the other day if we could just turn into a TB clinic. Because when, when you got TB cases, then you got to track them down. You've got to get them to come in, take their medicine. And a lot of times it's hard to, to even keep up, but that's all she's done for a week or two. But that's it for me.
Any questions for Bill?
No, I think we're good.
Bill, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys. Keep up the good work. Appreciate you.
See you, man.
Mally, I guess if you want to come forward with any information you'd like to share, as well as our request from the RDA.
Good morning. Mally Combs, the Executive Director of the Hardy County Development Authority. The first thing was to get reappointment for Jennifer Carr Kimball to the RDA Board, and we will need to have action on that.
Oh, I'll make a motion to give Jennifer Carr Kimball.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we reappoint Jennifer Carr Kimball to the RDA Board. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, three ayes. The ayes have it. Jenny is reappointed.
And she actually is a representative of American Woodmark also, just to note for the record. And then also Thursday, March the seventh, West Virginia Workforce is having a workshop in Petersburg, both at ten AM and also at one PM. To assist the Allegheny Wood Products employees that have lost their jobs. And I know Pilgrim's is actually having a workshop later in the week also. So there are job opportunities, both with Woodmark and also Pilgrim's. And, and we also have sent out the information to Metler, which is in the Morphild Industrial Park. So they're actually increasing employment also. And then to follow up with what Bill just said in regard to the Hardy County Health Department. We are now going through the process of analyzing the funding and getting approval from USDA. And I would anticipate that we will have that later this week. And once we have that, then we can set a date for closing. And then also Wendy's will coordinate the groundbreaking.
We're excited. We're excited.
Everybody, I think everybody's excited. So. And also the cost of materials have worn down because of the wood industry and some of the others. So even though the contractor's not recognizing, there's a decrease in cost. It, there is.
The point, another thing I heard, and I forgot to tell you, is I heard that Bruce's Hardwood's out on strike.
Oh.
I think they're back.
That's awful convenient, though, about the same time Allegheny Wood shuts down. They're probably the biggest hardwood floor producer in the state, aren't they?
Yeah, but they were out before Allegheny.
Were they?
Yeah, they were, they were out. And they had contracted negotiations and were not able to get those approved. But I was told that they're, that the strike's over, but I do not know that officially. So that's all I have. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mally.
Thank you, Mally.
Is the group, do you see any students in the hallway, Rhett, when you were out there? No students? All right. Do, do we anticipate them arriving some point in time or no?
Nobody contacted me.
We can take action and go from there. Say again? Okay, well, let's put them, put them off a little bit far. Darren, let's just jump ahead to you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I had with me the Intergovernmental Agreement Memorandum of Understanding for the Support of South Branch Valley Day Report Centers for Fiscal Year Twenty-Five. The other two counties have already signed. Just looking for your signature for, for commitment to that, so I can send the grant off.
What was the amount for that, Darren?
The total amount for the grant is two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
And our share?
Twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand? All righty.
And the others, they were increased as well, right?
Yes, all of them increased, you know, an equal share of twenty dollars each. I did last week speak with, at the Director's Meeting for all the State Directors of the DRC. I spoke with our representative for the Western Indian First Foundation to find out what's going on with that. That was a question everybody was, was curious about. They are coming close to picking the Director of that foundation. They may or may not have actually already contacted the person, but as soon as that's done, then they can start putting the foundation in place for however they're going to have the monies dispersed, whether that's going to be grants or, you know, like a statement of need. I suspect that it's probably going to be grants. They mentioned, mentioned grants several times.
Now, is it your understanding they're going to give every region, region an equal amount?
My understanding is every region is supposed to have an equal amount and then it's going to be done based on need and articulable need. So you're going to have to basically write up a grant format to discuss what you need, why you need it, and how it's going to be applied.
But I guess it's only going to be so much, they're, they're going to agree to this amount that's going to come out to the region.
It's a seven-year fund, and out of the seven years, I imagine only a certain amount is going to be a portion for every single year in the region only. There'll be, there'll be money to. I couldn't say for sure that it's going to be an equal amount per, per region, but I would imagine for it to be fairly done, they would have to do that.
Yeah, now the Chair, the Chair told me it was supposed to be an equal amount, so.
Yeah.
Of course, he's in our region too, so hopefully that's a good, hopefully that's a good.
I hope so. I'm encouraged by what, you know, what I'm hearing from it. My hope is that we'll be able to actually use funding from that to offset some of our funds that we have and make it more like an investment for us. So if we have seven years worth of funding that we can articulate, it turns into fourteen years worth of funding for us. That's, that's my plan for it.
Yeah, I think that they given us a couple of updates that I felt that they, they said the same thing. And I was a little, I think they shouldn't be getting up to give an update unless you kind of took some, you made some progress. And the update that you heard is the same one we heard, and that's been over a course of.
Month or more.
Two months, probably, so.
I speak with Tim Zaya, probably at least monthly. I'm always asking him questions.
You can have some pull there. But yeah, I, like, it seems like that's an issue, that they're, they're giving updates that aren't updates. Just something I'm devastated. And it worries me a little bit.
Well, there's a big worry among all the DRCs that funding is going to be lacking this year for the Community Corrections Grants. And that we're going to have to find other ways to, to fund our, our centers. Not that things are going to shut down, it's just less money combined.
Was Upstate County at that meeting that you were at?
We hosted the meeting. I can find out whether or not they were there, because I have a minute and sports, it's been hosted.
Upstate County's DRC has, I mean, like, they have a huge cash reserve. I told you about this before, right? And I just, I'm always interested in following up on that to find out, like, what, you know, why and, and.
There were twenty-six Directors online. We also had representatives from the state that were there, so I'm uncertain. They were probably there. They didn't speak up.
They didn't tell you they had a huge cash reserve or anything?
Yeah, no, they, they.
Well, their Commissioners are very worried about that, you know, it's like, yeah.
We keep our, we've been keeping our ear to the ground to see if there were any prevention types of programs being discussed. Because the, the monies that we have, I think, and I'll not speak for the other two Commissioners, but I believe in the conversations surrounding it. I think we, we all are in agreement that prevention with our young people needs to be a part of this plan. And hopefully some of our things that come forward will directly affect some of the lives of the youth that we live with here in the community.
Oh, absolutely. I'd love to see, I'd love to see our numbers slow down because prevention has taken a hold. And it's, it's slowing the stem of all of the referrals that we get for people who are actually suffering from addiction. What we do is we work with a lot of the people, you know, all of the folks we work with have addiction issues. And trying to keep them in the communities, keep them on their jobs. We work with a lot of CPS referrals where we're working with families and we're doing parenting, co-parenting. A lot of life skills issues, trying to work with them and have basically a, a whole package of treatments so that they're not just getting recovery treatment from us. They're also getting, you know, tools that they can use to go back and be more productive members of the community with their families.
Absolutely. Gentlemen, we have a request on the floor. I look for a motion for twenty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty, twenty-five to support our Day Report Center.
I'll make the motion, however you want to word it.
Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Three ayes. The ayes have it. Motion carries. And if you need a signature, we'll sign that. You'll have it. The clerk probably needs a copy.
Absolutely. You have to get a copy.
I have a certain pen.
Uh, we're not just putting in for that grant, though. We're also putting in for what's called the Justice Reinvestment Act Grant. So that one, and I'd look for other grants to see if there's anything that applies that we can actually use to fund the programs.
Just one, one signature?
Just one signature.
Okay.
And I apologize if your name's not actually typed out on that, but I wasn't sure if there was any change in.
You need a copy.
Like a copy.
Make a composition spot when that was written.
Good deal.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all your hard work.
Yes, thank you, Darren.
All right, you want to wait or keep going, or we can do the robotics thing if we want to and keep moving?
We'll do the robotics thing now, what you're saying?
In case they don't.
Yeah, that's, I, I think.
Commissioner Fanci, are there any objections to that?
No, I'm fine with it.
All right, the Morphild Robotics team has the opportunity to go to the national competition with several students coming up in.
It's soon, it's Houston.
And they have requested four thousand dollars to help with their travel. They do have some state winners that are going to be competing at that competition. I'd entertain a motion or, entertain a motion that we support them.
I'll make a motion. My second.
Do you want to put a dollar amount on that?
Well, you put the four out there.
Well, that's what they had requested.
That okay? Yeah, I'm good.
All right. Motion then, second. We support the Morphild Robotics trip to the national contest and the amount of four thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes. The ayes have it.
Just ask the clerk.
Yes.
When they get back.
Follow-up report. Say again?
Well, I would think that they'd be fine if you use it for that, that's why I take it.
Yeah. I mean, it's.
I think there's still some funds available in the.
ARP?
ARP.
Yeah.
Either one, whichever you want to do.
Yeah. All right.
Figure it out, let us know what.
One of the things that we put on the agenda was to talk about this, the fire company allocations for the coming year. I'm not sure, we're still waiting on the guidance for the funds we receive from the state. But we have the other funding that we had used to provide, set aside with the intention of supporting our fire companies. And Paul has given us the numbers for twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion on how we should proceed with the allocation of that funding that we've set aside?
Well, in the past, what we always do, we gave RIO a little. So, I don't remember what it was.
Five thousand, I'm thinking.
It could have been ten last year. Like, that's the number that's in my mind, but.
Might have been ten.
Uh, we had, remember, we had missed twenty twenty-two.
And so it's five per year, and it probably added up to ten. I think that probably is right, right.
And then the other three companies were proportioned by.
The number of calls.
You haven't broke that down yet. You just got.
Just got the numbers.
So that, you want a motion to do it in that process?
Yeah, I'd entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion that we do RIO five and then the rest, whatever the rest is left, break it down and number the calls, just like we normally do.
I second that motion.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
We had sent back one fifty.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that may be, is that a little more than?
Mark, have you heard anything in the circles that you travel in regarding the state monies that have been provided? And how that's being handled in other counties or by other?
I'm not in other counties. I know we're, which money they even funny right now, because we got two fire trucks and a firehouse going to be.
But you haven't heard how the, I mean, the, the amount we got from the state was less than fifty thousand, if I remember correctly. Or right at fifty thousand, twenty-three or four and then twenty-six or something, I, yeah.
I WZ changed that money, somebody came and rogered on.
Okay.
They haven't really said, but they found out about that. In me, that's all that matters.
In our County Commissioners Association meetings, we're still kind of waiting for more guidance from the Auditor's Office of State. So we'll be getting a check out to the fire companies with what we've set aside from the county side. And then we'll see what we do with monies that they've, wait for direction on how the state wants us to proceed with that one. All righty. The next thing on the agenda is text amendments to zoning ordinance. And as we said at the last meeting, we were waiting on the status of Senate Bill one seven-one, which was a, we discussed it at, at, at ad nauseam, at least for the impact that it had on our county zoning and, and other county programs that we have. And so it was tabled at the last meeting. The bill has been received and signed by the Governor. And it is effective ninety days.
I think ninety, yes, I just saw, ninety days, pretty sure, ninety days from passage.
Ninety day from passage.
May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, it will be effective.
May thirteenth, yeah.
With that lighting in mind, the text amendments just will be.
I think we don't know, I, it's my opinion that we don't know enough about how Senate Bill one seventy-one is going to impact our zoning to be able to address that effectively with the campground issue. Because I could see the argument being put forth that I am allowing people to put campers on my property to control the deer, to add a level of security, to support my agricultural operation. And they could certainly argue that point as a, as an ag use. And so I, I really think we need to see how this shakes out going forward. And possibly, we, we still have not received any word from Bowls and Rice.
And when, when we received the invoice that we've received so far, it seemed to indicate to me that there had been some work, but we don't, we haven't received that work.
The document from what, and we did raise some questions with them, and they raised some questions with us. So we have, I don't think we've paid that bill. But we, we haven't received anything either.
And gotten nothing. You don't pay, you don't get.
So anyway, I, I'm going to just go ahead and say that we just let this lie and.
You want to remove it from the table?
Remove it from the, yeah, but do we need a motion for that? All right.
I'll make a motion that we remove it from the table.
Table for the topic. Okay, been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the text amendment part there for the zoning ordinance regarding 171? Hearing none proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes, the ayes have it.
I have a question in reference to the windmills.
Okay.
That passed also, did it not?
It did.
You're talking about the Senate bill, right?
Yeah, that one and a half mile setback.
Oh, no, no, no.
No.
1.1 times.
That started out at two, right?
It started out at two miles, it got down to what was put in the paper and then it got amended further to 1.1 times the height of the tower plus the extended blade above to the nearest property line and 1.5 times the height of the tower plus the extended blade or propeller to a residence not on the same property. And that's still not far enough from what we hear from citizens who live within three quarters of a mile or a mile.
That is seeing that within the next six months of construction.
No, 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 no. I don't think that's clear, that's not clear at all, no.
No.
So it passed through the full house, it's not even passed into law. That was a setback, but the setback bill, so very important on this. When it was in the House Committee, the question was asked is whether this setback bill, which was offered actually out of Hardy County by our delegate, if it overrides county zoning, and it was explicitly stated by the committee council that it does not override county zoning.
Right.
So the setback bill is not a permissive bill for them to move forward with this project. It was one that, you know, the idea did originate out of Hardy County. Those distances, there have been many numbers put forward for those distances right now. You know, me personally, I don't like, I would rather see it be like 2.5 to the property line and 2,500 to the resident, residents. I think that would be more in line with nationwide averages, when you look at averages that other states have for setbacks, but no, that, and I think there's going to be a letter to the editor in the paper that's coming out evidently that considers that the project is a foregone conclusion. I think that's very, very far from true. I don't think, I don't think actually this setback bill, and I don't know that it actually passes through because it's not on the agenda. So, you know, we have March 9th midnight, this legislative session is over. It's not on the Senate Judiciary Committee's agenda yet. So that means there's a chance that even this setback bill doesn't get passed.
Might not go.
And even if it does pass, we still have zoning.
Right.
So in our, in the council, within those, it's in the minutes of that meeting said that it doesn't override, this setback bill does not override county zoning. And we didn't have a preemption bill this year. There was no preemption bill offered. The preemption bill, which would have allowed exempt host generated facilities to be permitted using any zoning district, that wasn't put forward this year. So we have the zoning in place that I would say does not allow that project to take place. This setback bill would be, you know, for other areas in the state.
As this, it was really interesting and I believe Commissioner Shitram, Commissioner Fancler will attest that when Delegate Ward put that bill forward, our phones lit up from folks in neighboring counties, mine from Grant County and from Mineral County, and I don't know where your calls came from, saying that two miles was not far enough. And sadly, some of the stories that we heard about health issues from the droning sound of those wind turbines and the push, 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 and the strobe effect of the sun behind the, behind the propellers, making life very challenging for certain individuals living within three quarters of a mile or a mile of these wind turbines in Grant and Mineral County. And, and they pleaded with us to make sure that this thing got passed and our short mountain group advocated.
Hundreds of hours, maybe thousands.
To, to make sure that folks were made aware of the health concerns of what other states' setbacks were and, and the impact on the aesthetics and property values to share that with the public. And, you know, we'll see where we go from here.
What day?
Yes.
Not to jump on the next, the earlier subject, 171, three hundred and two.
Sure.
That was, you were tabling the text amendments?
We actually didn't table it, we took it off.
Took it off, table.
It's removed from the agenda.
Yeah.
Greg went over, see Jimmy's over there.
I did want to. If the paper could put, because Paul brought up a point that I think many community members have, that, and I don't know, like, I think there's information that is going out that would indicate if this setback bill passes, then this. Yeah, that is a foregone conclusion. I don't think that's the correct, I don't think that's correct.
He wasn't sure whether.
That the setback bill makes this project?
Has classified things to state.
That it make?
People think it got passed to their.
They don't hurt. Everything we did just makes it a little more.
Because the two, well, the two aren't connected. I mean, this is a setback bill, but it doesn't just mean that this project is a go then, because we still have our planning, county plan, our, our county ordinances, which doesn't allow for this because it's residential and that's why these two things aren't just connected. I think the setback bill would have been good if it would, would have greater distances, you know, because it would allow people to actually buy property and know what those distances are.
The scary part is if they allow them to call them wind farms or solar farms. You put the farm on the back of that name, then 171 president's over.
But the language in 171 says for food and fiber production, not energy.
Allow them to call them farms, it'll give us a lot more power to keep it, to do with what we want.
Why the solar farm is throwing it and drive down to Augusta on Fort Hill Road, where they're putting it on both sides of Fort Hill Road.
Both sides?
It's under construction now.
All right. Hello, Mr. Assessor?
Hey, how's it going?
Jimmy, I have a question for you. It has to do with the wind and the solar. Do, if we would make a motion, or is it in our power to give you control that they cannot be classified as farm?
Well, that's what I have to talk to Grant County about theirs.
Right.
What they do is they take the site where the windmill sits, which would be like a five acre track. Now, that track could be, say, if it's 100 acres or 200, it could be in other farm exemption or managed timber, which is a real cheap rate. However, they allow the county to take out five acres per windmill that goes class three. Okay, I think with all the windmills they have, which are like maybe around 140 some in Grand County.
Hundred and ninety.
Okay. And I hear like their revenue, tax revenue is like 200 some thousand dollars a year. So they make money, but the windmill itself, the state prices it out, we have nothing to do with that. And, and they have that salvage price, which they allow them to have, it's a windmill, even though it may be a, I don't know, three to five million dollar windmill, practically it's taxed a little bit, nothing. But there was a build estate, and I'm not sure where it lays right now, where they tried to do away with that salvage rate or raise that rate, because it's only like 5% of what the meal was, or, you know, windmill was actually worth.
Yep.
So it wasn't a whole lot of revenue at that point. Although there's good revenue through the land, of course, you can regularly get in, but plus they fit up buildings and things like that. But my grand count makes money off of them, but it's not like, but the windmill itself, we don't have anything to do with that, state prices it out and it's taxing.
But it's not classified as farm.
No, and that track comes out of class three, as of right now, unless the state would have to change something, they allow us to, the county to put it under class three and price it out like any other class three property.
If you, the sad part about that is where those proposed wind towers are, they're so close to the property line that to axe out from the center point of where the tower is, five acres around, you'd be clean out on two or three other people's property.
Okay.
Because that's, then that whole property is owned residential.
Yeah, it'd be split over, I mean, if it crossed over somewhere else's property, that person on the other side would still be taxed on that, you know, say if two acres are here and three acres over there.
Yeah.
It'd be split out, you know, to each tax person. Yeah, I'm surprised.
And that's a state requirement to do that cutout?
No, that's what we do, we do on our own, like a split, because, you know, if you go, you two overland side by side, just happens, one of those mills cross your property, you get how many acres on your side, how many acres on your side, taxing.
Yeah, but you said it didn't matter if it's in a 200, like, what I'm getting at is, is that state, that five acre deal, is that state or is each county doing that?
County, that's kind of what the counties have done, if the states allow that to happen.
But we can set our own guidelines to that.
Uh, no, I think it pretty much, they wouldn't let you do much more now. I mean, they wouldn't let you probably go to like a six or 10 or whatever. I would think.
We do have a little say, you know, that's what I'm, I guess.
But normally what they do now, the counties do is take basically five acres out on one windmill.
And it wouldn't be around, but it'd be.
Yeah, yeah, right, it'd be, yeah.
Five, wouldn't it?
Five acres per site, because as narrow as that one land, piece of land is right up top there, there's not 1,000, 1,200 feet.
How many acres of?
I don't know, I think there, last time I looked, it was like four or five landowners that would benefit from rental.
Lease agree.
Lease agreements provided by the companies. And then the total number of population down through there, I forget what the number was, but it was far greater than the four or five landowners that would be impacted.
Now, the other thing, you got three windmills on it.
Yeah.
You're out of, you have more than eight acres all your family.
Yeah. I think that, like I say, a lot of times with our zoning, I think, you know, we've still got, we've still got, we've got, well, we've got a best case scenario for, you know, the decisions that we've made regarding that particular site. And while there have been, you know, avenues created for discussion, I still think it's not in the interest probably of our, at least the large number of citizens that we've heard from, to have that operation down through there.
Can the five acre setback be all per cost of action from a private landowner?
It's not really a setback, it's just the way the taxes are applied to the property.
Now, that could be an issue if somebody's home was close to one, which I doubt if they ever put one that close, but I know what you're saying, probably if there's a house there, would if somebody could put it next to it, I'm sure there's probably plenty ordinances that stop that.
Yeah, it's interesting and some of the materials that have been shared with us, the manufacturer's recommendations is at, you know, about a quarter of a mile, 1,600 and some odd feet, that the manufacturer recommends that they not be placed any closer than that to a residence, a domicile and.
Maybe the land, but not the residence.
The residence and, you know, it changes the ecosystem underneath of them because of the amount of land that has to be taken out to footprint and the air movement.
Go by that to the, because they may own, might be a lot between there and there, that would, you're done.
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody, you know, had realized home and they wanted to sell it at a fair price, somebody sold that big windmill up on that.
Yeah. Once it's there, you're, you know, you may own your land, but you ain't gonna be able to use it.
Knowing what I know now, knowing what I know now and the documentation and the, the citizen comments that I've heard, I would personally not buy a residence that was anywhere near a windmill.
Yeah. I'm surprised they don't look more like, I mean, I know they're trying to get close to part of the sublines and all that, but places like the big tracks laying up your hunting clubs and things like that.
They don't want them either.
Yeah, they've been going to those places.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I could see, I mean, they say disturb wildlife, but I know we've been up on the mountain before and right through their places, you go down, there's always deer laying there.
Craig Greenwald and I went through this discussion, I got on the planning commission when we were talking about hunting grounds, he wanted this to have more setback so that it would allow the hunting club to hunt, in other words, you can't fire, discharge fire within so many feet of dwelling. And he wanted us to keep setback so they could utilize all their property. Well, he and I had the right smart argument on that. I said, that ain't gonna happen.
Yeah.
And I said, we're not gonna devalue your property just so you can gain a little more hunting ground, I did that, just to elevate your own risk. But then that's the same type of scenario with the windmill.
We'll follow that.
Think about it a little more rather than just what's going in the pocket.
People watching that agenda every day.
Yeah.
And it's not on there yet, so it might not.
I'd say the farm.
It might not even pass this year. They're gonna work Saturday, they're also gonna work Saturday.
That's why it's being pushed, there's a lot of money that lobbyists are throwing on their table to.
But it'll be over.
Yeah, that's why they're trying to override counties and what they can't, can't do.
Well, we'll continue to watch that.
We've been able to kind of stay them off for three years now. We never have officially said we, haven't banned them in Hardy County, they just need to find a better place.
Yeah.
I don't want that, but they need to find one.
I mean, this is the, so we did, dealt two years with the preemption bills, but that was an offer this year. We didn't have to deal with the preemption bill. Now, we had to deal with other preemption bills, but not specifically related to this one.
I'll tell you, take that salvage price off the wheels, if that, and I'm sure I'm well, trying to find out today where that is, but if they took that off, that would go a bunch of crunch on those companies.
Yeah.
Right now, they're basically getting them up.
That's a whole different ballgame if they take that off.
Because actually the landowners won't play in that class three, it's not so much those, they just, they have the windmill itself. I mean, I'm sure they're subsidized the owner to a certain degree, but still.
I think, I think Randy Smith has offered that bill since 2012.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, I think you're welcome.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Wendy Branson.
Yes, sir.
Your turn.
My turn, my turn. Before you all, well, I got out of order. So we discussed, ongoing discussion for the past, since I've taken this position for the grant agreement for the oxygen tanks for Mathias Baker, we did get our portion from USDA last week. It was for 15,700 in the USDA grant. And we have not dispersed those funds yet. I'm waiting for the approval to have those funds dispersed. I'm waiting for you all to approve those dispersments.
You want me to make the motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion now. And then our original motion, and I'll just go through it again.
That's fine.
All right. Was we were gonna add to whatever that took to make 30,000, whatever February is for 16, 14, whatever. Anyway, allow you to cut the check to them with, with the recommendation that we get a receipt back from where the funds was used for. That way we have, will that be efficient enough there, Mr. Clerk? All right, that's my motion.
Second. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? This has been going on for three years.
At least three years.
Trying to get this money and we finally have gotten the money and I'm sure that the cost of things has gone up in that time.
It has, every time.
Well, they'll just be able to buy it soon, however many tanks the money will go for.
Yep, and then whatever they want to add.
Started out as eight or nine hundred and I think they're eleven or 1,200 pieces now.
The last time I checked, they were like 12 plus, so.
Yeah, they just keep everything else.
All righty, well, then properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, the ayes have it.
The only other part is, is if they ask for this deal again, I'd say, you all go for the grant and we'll match it or something.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not in favor of, no.
No, I think that's the way to proceed on the next round. It's been a pain in the neck.
It has. Next question with that is, do you want me to give you the check?
That'd be fine, I'll take it.
Okay. Or I didn't know, that's fine. Okay.
Yep.
I figured since.
Dave wants to.
One of us.
Dave, maybe you need to do that, Dave.
Yeah, I can do that.
Commissioner.
I can do that.
We'll be, we'll be in contact. How about that?
Oh, you have that one in, and the one from. With the one we're gonna do for the fire company anyway. And maybe you can do them both same time. I'll make them happy. It'll get pretty big.
Good deal.
Be a good day, be a good day that day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You'll get more votes that way.
And then proclamation for the late Sue K. Halterman.
Yeah, and I'd like to read that proclamation if I may. It says, whereas Sue K. Halterman, an outstanding Hardy County citizen, has contributed over 25 years of dedication to the county government. Whereas Sue K. Halterman made history by becoming the first woman to hold the position of county clerk and circuit clerk. And whereas Sue K. Halterman's tireless work and dedication to her role earned her the respect and admiration of her colleagues and the community she served. Whereas Sue K. Halterman joined FEMA after her career in county government to help people in need, making a difference in lives she touched in many states and abroad. She left a lasting impression on everyone she met. Now, therefore, we, the Hardy County Commission, do hereby proclaim January 28, 2024, as Sue K. Halterman Day. And in witness thereof, the County Commission of Hardy County signed on this fifth day of March, 2024, and tested by Clerk Greg Ely. And I would recommend that a framed copy of this be delivered to her family. 2024, yeah.
I see, I just saw that.
Yep.
Yeah. Actually, I'm gonna put it on better paper.
Yes, I knew that.
The paper that we had, it was in the clerk's office and it was locked last evening, so.
Okay. No, we'll wait till she puts it on the good paper.
I need a motion.
I would accept the motion that this proclamation be adopted today, the fifth day of March, 2024.
Same move. I'll second.
It's been properly moved in the second. Any further discussion? Sue was a wonderful public servant. And certainly she'll be missed by her family and her contributions will be remembered.
Absolutely.
Robert lives right next door.
Okay.
Um, and then I gave you all the gym usage for the Wellness Center.
Yes.
Some people have picked up their New Year's resolutions. You can see that.
Yeah, I guess the New Year's resolutions did help. So Morgan had said, you've currently used $2,010 for your memberships. She said it has picked up wonderful. And then she has also attached the March schedule. And I'll be sending that out to.
Stick your mouth into it now since I've been done this. That's the most it's on here.
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
No, it's good.
So hopefully that'll continue. And then I attached the budget for what Tammy sent me. The only one I didn't get, I didn't get, she didn't send me Peggy's budget, but. Um. And then just, just to let you guys know, you've known by text, but we, I have scheduled airline tickets and for our upcoming travel in July, airline tickets and hotel stay. So all that is done.
All righty. Anything else? Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
The clerk has left the room.
I think I had to go.
Tom, what do you need?
No, I was just.
While we're, while we're, while we're waiting for the clerk to find himself back to his seat there again. The minutes for February 7th, 2024's regular meeting, the exoneration settlements consolidations orders, payroll register, which the amounts were for February 1 through 15, And for February 16 through 29, $99,348.93. The clerk's report of wills admitted and executors appointed. And the clerk's report of administrators, curators, and committees appointed in Exhibits 1A. I'd entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
Same move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in the second that we accept and approve the minutes and the exoneration settlements consolidations and other things mentioned. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes. The ayes have it. Clerk Ely.
Yes, sir. I have, you should have in your hand now, a list of the poll workers for May 14, 2024 primary. The strike twos and the yellow and orange is green, is color code that we use for parties. See how our parties are getting them.
Okay.
And what I may do, I mean. Something I'm throwing.
Seventeen. People.
I may, may be sending another worker to these precincts. But often, going back to do that, that'd be particularly for, to assist with the stringing. Because you have to have a string, reach ballots for the Democrat, Republican, Mountain, and nonpartisan ballots used for the optical scan. And then you gotta do the same thing for the expressway.
Okay.
So.
Greg, can you go over something? Can you go over this with, like, if they're marked out, that means they're not. Is that what you said? Have you already said this?
The little lines, the red lines through them.
Yes.
Those were, yes. That's where they're going through and.
These can do it. These will be doing.
Well, they were, they were, it was on their, one of their check sheets I'd given them. They had worked previous year.
Okay, so no one's marked out here?
No, other than, than precinct 13.
Okay.
Block right there. She could have been yesterday.
Okay, that one's, okay, a blue mark.
Didn't work, yeah.
Okay. Now, so can we? Are you sending this out to the committees? Are you sending it to the committees? But is, we can send this to the committees if they ask?
Oh, yeah, but I'd asked them pretty, I mean, I've said them, I said, I said in the last years instead of like use this as a base for all workers.
Okay, okay. I'm just, sometimes they send up an email asking. I just wanted to make sure, like, what to do. But this can be sent if they ask that question. Okay.
Sure can. Like Sam might add some more in all because it's all back.
Okay.
So far, I've got three more to add about some secretary stuff. The strike twos on the back are out.
Okay, those are out.
Yeah, Maggie, she could work, but because she works for Lucas, so she didn't want anybody fussing around.
Yep.
Same way with.
Wendy.
I'll get somebody else to do that.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yes.
All right, I'd entertain a motion if we approve the poll worker list and alternates that have been presented to us by the county clerk.
Steve's still looking.
Okay.
Same move. Second.
It's been properly moved in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, three ayes. The ayes have it.
Hey, we need to set dates for a bunch of meetings in March.
Okay.
I was looking at the week of 18.
We had discussed the week of the 18th previously. Does that work on everybody's schedule?
Yes.
I think so.
All right.
Do we have the time?
What time we usually start at? 10 o'clock?
Do you want me to contact the offices?
What day?
To give them time.
18th through the 22nd.
18th through the 22nd.
Last year I contacted.
What time later? We'll get it scheduled. Who, what does?
10 o'clock.
Okay.
Hey, Wendy, will you put that on the shared calendar, the 10 o'clock start time?
Yes. So we're allowing the 18th, 19th, and 20th?
21 and 22.
I won't be able to do it on the 22nd.
Okay, so we'll try to be done by the 21st.
Okay.
Even if we have to work late into the night.
Absolutely. I'm good with that. I'm good. Yep.
Did we have a start in town?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. Yeah.
First day is the 18th?
First day is the 18th. And Wendy will work to.
Well, I just have all day on there if that's coming from mine.
You're gonna work on getting this. We could just put the, change that time. Yeah.
I'll work with Greg and then pass it on to the rest of us on the, the schedule and time.
Good deal. All righty. Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Stephen, I think when I put that on there, I didn't have the time, so I can block it off for the whole day, but I'll change it.
Okay, okay, gotcha. All right.
Clerk Ely, anything further?
No, no, no. I got the jail bill label on my desk. Yeah, I'll be in my bathroom.
Okay. I, I, you know, we had discussed it kind of previously about the addressing when that question came up. And that's, that agreement has been in effect for roughly a month. Is that right? I mean, I remember we signed it. And have you gotten any feedback?
Well, anything, I've talked to Nicole. She got back what she sent in. And she was reviewing to see if there's some errors that she, she will make those corrections. Rather send it back, a reminder on that and stuff. So hopefully I'll go down and check with her and see where we're at on that.
Trying to make sure she gets the bill addressed.
In the aerial, Dave, we doing that aerial at Congress, probably starting end of March first, April, before the leaves start coming on.
Matt, have we paid for that or does that come out of your budget?
It comes down to money and gems.
Okay. No, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure that, I want to make sure you got it covered, Paul. Okay. Farmland preservation numbers for the month of February was $10,868.00. 10, 8, 6, 8.00.
Greg, do you want the?
Less land stamps.
Actually, we read 80 some hundred last time. Last month, so we're up a little bit.
But one of the, did not catch that.
Yes. We are.
Money, though. Yeah, of course. Those are works, I guess.
Yeah, right, right. He doesn't have the jail bill, right? We don't have that.
No, we don't have the jail bill.
She's a looker.
Oh, okay. What was the amount?
$31,682.66.
All righty.
That's same as last previous.
Yep.
Yeah, Jane works.
Right there. Now, does it say in there how soon we'll hit our discounted rate? All right, lose our, lose our.
We're still in our discounted rate. So as long as we stay there until the fiscal year changes, we, we kept that good rate.
Probably April, we'll be out of it.
We'll be out of it in April. There's, I know there are some counties already out of it, so.
Our per diem rate is $43.58.
43.58.
There, we're still at the discounted rate.
That's very good, very, yeah.
Good deal.
It is now 54. They increased it now because that's the old, no, we're.
We're still getting the discounted.
We're getting the discounted. Oh, community, um, I don't have that number. Yes, I do, I do.
Well, with inflation, I think last time ours was about 20.
Yeah.
It is lower and we have some things that happen that saves.
The judges and the magistrates have been very helpful in working with home incarceration and alternative sentencing to help us out.
I told your gentleman, let us know they ask for their grant.
Right.
It's all, we have a bunch of counties that ask for our grants.
Right. Matt, anything else you'd like to share?
Trivia. 60. Off the record, in 1966, on this date, the Ballad of the Green Beret was the number one song in the United States.
Did you hear that on your drive over today?
No, no. As a matter of fact, I called the guys at the radio station, told them to put a plug in and tell them thank you to the special forces of the United States Army for doing things for us. We will never know what they've done. And, you know. Who sung that? Barry, God, what was his last name? Barry something. Yeah, Sadler.
Sadler, Sadler.
And, but I run with a bunch of those guys. They're retired, believe me. But, you know, I sent out a bunch of emails this morning. Just told them about that and told them thanks for their service. Thanks for being a good friend. You know, these folks. I went, the congressman allowed me to represent him to the 1919 Special Forces Annual Convention. And also the Alumni Association of the State was the host of Charleston for the National Alumni Association. And you meet some incredible guys. And I mean, you end up, I met one guy who said that he had a friend that was in, on the squad with him that didn't get his combat infantry badge for 18 years. Now, regardless of what you think about foreign policy, you know, where we're supposed to be and where we're not supposed to be. You know, they, they do a lot of stuff that we don't know about. They've prevented, I'm sure, a lot of stuff. So, you know, but I always like to give those guys a lot of credit.
Just to top that, I never got my combat infantry badge either. I'm from the Navy.
You want our office to look into it? We more than that do.
I think the Navy will tell you to.
We do, we do, we do a lot of the work as do the central offices.
Yeah, the Marines do, but not you.
But it's, when you meet these guys, I've got a friend of mine that was, he's still in. And he was wounded in Afghanistan. Pretty much like Chinaman Cuz to let his legs have. And he's lucky to be alive. And his interpreter came over to put tourniquets on him. They killed him. His captain came over to help. They killed him. And then, but he survived. He was in Walter Reed for two years under a fictitious name. Because the Taliban, they still hunt, hunt our guys down. But he rehabbed, rehabbed himself to the point where he's back active, jumping and humping. And you see guys like that and gals, you know.
Absolutely.
Makes you feel good that, well, western Indians sleep hard at night anyway because they protect themselves. But, you know, it takes special people like SEALs and any of the special operators to want to get into that. Because, you know, they go to places where everybody knows who they are or what they're supposed to be doing and stuff.
I still take part in a unique educational program that, that we have where I serve as an adjunct faculty member for 18 Delta medics. And it is a privilege to share with what little bit of information I have that might benefit them when they're on a mission. But on those days when I do that, I never feel any more safe for my physical or medical condition than I do when I am with those guys. Because they will tell you that they can keep you alive with a paper cup and a plastic straw. And you aren't dead till we say you're dead. And they do a wonderful service for our country.
One of my good friends, he started out as a pathfinder in Vietnam in 67. And he retired out of the Special Forces and he was nominated, inducted into the Reginald Hall of Fame at RAG. And we went down for it. And General Hoyer was. And we went down for it. And General Lord was there. The crane general was in there. And I looked at my wife and I said, we're the safest place we'll ever be. There's SF tabs in here. And they don't need a weapon. You know how that goes.
Yes. Yes, they are.
But thank you for indulging me.
Yes.
We gotta give our veterans credit.
Yes. Thank you. Phil?
It's good to be back here.
Yes, good to have you. Good to see you, good to see you today.
Good to see you.
Does anybody have anything else for the good of the cause to come forward to the county commission at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn. Move in second. If there are those in favor, aye.